For Tuesday, April 2nd. Let the record show that all committee members are present with the exception of Walter in Anastasia. We have no unfinished council business or committee business. And then our referrals, new referrals for consideration, continuation of the 2020-2021 discussion. So where we left off on Tuesday, we were gonna be presented with some adjustments to the tentative budget that we originally received from the mayor. And we have since received those adjustments. And I'd like to just turn it over to Mayor Alio if you'd like to kinda walk us through the handout everybody has, a copy of the new one. Bill, you want to take it away?
Sure, thanks Bob. First, I want to actually thank all my department heads who have, you know, they stepped up to the plate. We have a lot of cuts here that they felt they could make. But, you know, sometime in the future, a lot of these are gonna have to be taken care of and some of the things that are not gonna be taken care of with these cuts. So I'll make an explanation as we move along. What we did is we actually started preparing for, I guess you could say, the worst-case scenario. We've been preparing that for several weeks now. And so what we did here is we take that, each one of them take a look at their budget and come back and say, okay, this is what, this is what we feel that we can do it out this year because of the situation at hand. So what I, the document I've given to you here, and I guess I'm not sure if you want me to go line by line with it, or if you want to just, if you have questions, we can do it that way. But just to summarize, this document, going through the different departments, we came up with 203,944 in additional cuts that, from the tentative budget. And the magic number was 117,000. Now, if we defer the 50% of the federal tax on payroll, that could give us a $140,000 permit with another $140,000 going into that to a separate fund. Okay? It's like we talked about last Tuesday. And then it, still in this budget are two positions, one for the police department and one for HVAC person. HVAC, we call it HVAC jack-of-all-trays to help us with our, all of our heating, air conditioning, repair work around in all the city facilities. Now, if that position, if we don't have that position, then we're gonna have to put back in about $65,000 in maintenance contracts that we have throughout the city for different facilities, so.
Basically something we used to subcontract and now we're bringing it in now?
Yes, yes, yes. So add, adding, adding to the mix would be $10,000 to the health insurance because these two positions, we're not sure if there'd be single or two people or family. So we're adding that in.
What departments are picking those up?
Police department will be picking up the position that, for the bail reform and discovery reform, that position. And DPW will be picking up the HVAC position.
Is that, Bill?
Just a second.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, one of the things you sent us, I think it was in NICOM, there was something about the discovery thing, where they're gonna give the counties or cities under a certain number.
Yeah, yeah.
And that impact us.
Right, yes, it will. And I was getting to that. The advocacy update I sent you yesterday for NICOM, in here is discovery reform implementation aid. So according to this, we, we will be eligible, we may be eligible for, included but not limited to digital evidence transmission technology. We, in this document, we have cut $7,000 out for new digital recording equipment. So we will keep that cut and we'll try to get it under this. Administrative support, computers, hardware, operating software, data connectivity, development of training materials, staff training, overtime costs, litigation readiness, and pretrial services. And it goes on to say that, let's see, eligible entities include, not limited to counties, cities with populations less than 1 million, law enforcement, prosecutorial entities within towns and villages. So we would be eligible to, to apply for those funding, so we may get, we may get something there. So, okay, for that position. Okay? So, Fred, what's your thing?
Um, Bob, we spread the second person, the HVAC guy, we've split that three ways, didn't we, from water sewer in general? So the general is, we didn't apply his.
I was trying to, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So it's split into three depart, three divisions, okay?
Yeah, because it'll, yeah, it'll work out for somebody, so, yes, so. So, having said that, that comes out to, with the 203 plus the 140 and then adding the 10 back in, that's 3,003, 3,033, 94. To reach our zero, we had to come up 117. So we, we could apply 216, 944. We could take that and put it, again, take it out of the, our projected income on the sales tax.
We could lower it from 490, 290, less 216 because I, I think we were all a little concerned that we were not gonna hit that mark. It's gonna go down something, so we could lower our sales tax revenue projection by 216, 944 and come in at zero.
That would be, is that, I mean, is that, is that good? Is that enough?
Well, 216, I'm not sure. It, I would say it may be one or two months worth of sales tax revenue. I, I used 125,000, so that's roughly two months' worth of negative impact.
That would be, if we were at zero for 200.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, maybe. So the one thing that, on my call with Tom Reed's, I had a call today at 11 o'clock, weekly call with Congressman Reed's office, and the one thing that we talked about on that call was recovery phase four. And one of the pushes will be, is for reimbursement for lost revenues by smaller communities. Because the first one, phase three, was for municipalities of 500,000 or, not a lot of them in the nation, only one in our state, New York City. So the next round, it will be a push to, to give reimbursement for lost revenues that the smaller cities, towns, and villages are having, so.
I might throw in there, I talked to the mayor and we're in a crisis and everybody's trying to thwart the hit, and I took 27,500 out of the demolition to cut, I cut it in half. So I thought that's important to mention.
So that's not in the outcome budget?
We had 55, I'm saying we reduce, use half.
So that's a good point. So like when you say, just to throw in there, grab on training for the legislative board, it was budgeted for $1,000, now it's 750.
Yeah. And the celebration account, we cut 2,000 out of that, this budget of that 10, so. And I can have, I have the fire chief here, I have the police chief here, and I have, and I have the, by bringing the director of public works. They can explain any of this that they, any of the cuts that they have here. They can also explain what we talked about on the last, last, on Tuesday night, about the projects, the project out here, the boiler at the fire hall, the repair work at station number one, and how we can get that safe. We do have an updated figure on that that I'll let Bob talk about, just to get it, get the corner somewhere safe from falling off of that. And we also have, Bob is taking a look at central fire station, your aprons in the front and rear, we can let that go probably another year, we can patch it for now and make the repairs there, so that, that can give us some savings, you know, that we are gonna use out of the existing contingency fund, so, in the current budget, so.
If I could echo Bill's sentiments, I, I've been here for nine months and I've never seen us ask more out of the department heads than we have this year. And these, these are sacrifices, the interesting is they planned on doing, and we just have to say to our constituents, we're not gonna be able to do the repairs that we'd like to do or whatever, the demolitions, so our department has really worked hard at trying to keep us at zero and do the best they possibly can with, in some cases, a shorter staff, but I commend them for what they've tried to accomplish.
So a lot of these under say payable, the dental police, where they will agree payable by 7, 10, 18, 19, what does that mean?
I could have, Chief, you wanna explain that?
Sure. So initially, when I was gonna budget for the sergeant that I'm using to do the discovery reform, that's a new position, and I asked my secretary who does my payroll for me to budget in the cost of a new sergeant. When in fact, I should have been more specific whether, and budgeted in the replacement, which would be a patrolman, step one, in addition to the cost of a promotion to sergeant. And so we actually inadvertently over budgeted, we budgeted like as if we were hiring a brand new sergeant, which we're not. We're gonna hire a patrolman and much less really pay. And after the mayor asked us to go back, you know, we went line by line and we discovered that oversight and that's the cost difference between what would actually be, you know, what I'm looking for. We inadvertently budgeted for a new sergeant, which is not what we're gonna do.
Cool, now that's, yeah.
But, and Chief, with discovering the things that we might be eligible, that the mayor just mentioned, that might also generate more funds to be used to bring down that cost to you.
Absolutely. So if we, if we qualify for that, which based upon the initial information I have, it would be, we may get that money and, you know, it doesn't really say how long the money's gonna be good for or whatever. And then if we do receive that money, that would just go into the general fund, you know, for payroll.
Yep, I think that would be a good idea.
And effects revive in the government budget, so.
But ask, Tim, with our years, it's one of the 36,000?
Yeah, yeah.
So, 36,000, basically where that comes from is you're, by April 28th, or by April 28th, in the last month, we've retired out our two highest paid employees. Captain's, paramedic level, 25, one's, well, one's 25 years seniority and one's 34 years seniority. And those are, those are our number one and number two highest paid employees. So the net savings on that end, even, even going to staff the fire department, you're bringing, you know, a captain with that type of seniority and let's say $72,000 replacement on the firefighter, $39,000. So you're gaining all the savings all the way along there, plus the tier six, they're contributing towards retirement, so you're bringing in a cheaper employee. That's how all those savings, those savings took place. The other thing is that right now, you're, you know, the fire team shut down. You know, it's that guy's mantra falls and we don't know how, they shut down week seven and week three of their two classes. And just to let you know, the stories in the state is that we signed up five guys for February just to get spots for the August 1st class, and there was already 55 out of eight spots though. So it's just that they've changed over and it's like you gotta strike or else you're gonna be, and they only run two half a year, so you gotta keep, you know, keep out of the personnel.
Um, Chief, now, there's two more retirements, you're down four?
Yeah.
So how are we doing on overtime? Because of the minimums down.
Right now, you're at nine. You know, usually your overtime's picked up in the summertime, the vacation season. Out of your contract, you're only allowed off, there's only 13 weeks a year where you're allowed to catch two guys off. So right now, you're, you're, you're not at your peak overtime season.
May I mention something? This, his adjusted fire payroll reflects a full staff and we're phasing in hopefully four additions throughout the year. And so it's a fully staffed fire department with the new hires coming on, and we tried to phase in the impact of that salary as well.
Bob, the 20,000 reduction at the airport, I'm just curious what it's for, so if I could ask, what we're cutting out of that, of that money?
We have a $35,000 building repair budget, and I've been covering money or trying to raise money over several years to replace HVAC up there, it's over 20 years old, cold units. And recently, I think we have a really good chance of getting a DOT multi-mole train to replace both those units, so my strategy, looking where our cost of care is, where grant funding was available or, you know, other options, if that answers your question.
Okay.
Do you think we can fund it through other, you know, I can be, hopefully think we better next year move back to doing civil building repair.
Bob, you're on the, I don't wanna say hot seat, but you're up there. The paper we wrote out, let's see, Tuesday, the capital projects, could you go through those and just tell us where we stand? Like, I brought up Main Street, East Side, and Striping, and we thought maybe we could do some of that in-house, but where are you thinking we can get things done and just hold off for another year?
I have a list of projects that we're trying to do, you know, DPW and most of those have been, you know, crossed off the list unless they were in-house projects. You know, the one that really needs to be done, it's time square insurance, I can answer any questions we have for that, I mean, I've gone over a couple times. We still don't have a bid yet. We're close to being able to advertise and get a bid, so I won't really know what the cost of that is until then. Just to, you know, as far as Main Street restriping, I think 65,000 was the ask there. It's really only a $25,000 restriping project, but it involves a lot of curving and curb ramp and sidewalk replacement for repair. That also includes potentially $10,000 from hospitals, I've been meeting and talking with them about what they still have to go through a number of processes, I'm sure that's on hold for now. But we have a capital project at Center Street and Main Street, put in a flashing beacon, you know, push button, flashing beacon, and so I can probably get away with reducing that less, but the lane reduction, you know, is time sensitive to a certain extent to get, before that capital project is, is done next summer.
Okay. And then the other one, I think we put on hold was the franchise parking lot.
Yeah.
That one, we can put that off for another year. And then the other one was the radio tower, is that something we can pull back on too?
That's one Bill and I have coordinated on together, maybe he says some thoughts on it.
We could put that off for another year.
Just, Bill, help me understand, what is the, what's the net benefit with that?
What, I'm sorry?
What's the net benefit with that? Because right now, what, we have an agreement to repay Community Bank to have the radio tower up there?
Well, we just, we're pretty much, it's up there or not, there's no agreement, well, there wasn't agreement, the agreement expired, it's just, it's up there right now.
Okay.
And we, we've talked about it periodically and it's there. The benefit for us would be, it would be on our property, it would be up at the reservoir up there, it would be high enough, we wouldn't have any interference with all of our stuff. And it would, right, the other thing that happens right now, if the power goes out at Community Bank, we're down until they send somebody in and take the power back on. So it's happened twice now.
Is that the thing that communicates with our?
Communicates with sewer system? Yes, it communicates, yeah, it communicates with here, with all the outbuildings, communicates with the, what you call the status system?
Yeah, that's our wireless communication link, almost, except for the, it's all wireless too, like sewer, water, they don't have any currently, they're not out there.
But it's not police fire, radio tower?
No, no. What I, you see, what our, the 150 would include probably 100 to 100, 100, 100, 100 to 130 foot power. And also, it would be, it would be to be battery backup long enough so that if we had, if things went down, battery backup would kick in and then we could go up with a generator and let it keep it going back, you know, keep it going farther if the, but it controls the, is this the one that, no, we got bad, we got generator on the pump stations now. But it lets all the communication between here and all the other buildings and all that.
Is there, is it municipal only or would it have the opportunity to be a revenue generator to?
It could be, it could have that opportunity.
Sell that tower of usage just to, yeah, mobile or whatever?
Yep, it could be that opportunity.
Like the ones that are up there on the mannequin now, that the revenue goes to the URA, those towers, do they get through?
Yeah. Yeah, we could, there's other cell phones, there's other, that could be up high enough, somebody might be interested in a, in a running spatial inside.
Yeah, and then the revenue would come to the city, of course, you know.
That also covers the cost of us to relocate all of our equipment that's over on Community Bank over to that new tower, correct?
Yeah.
I'm assuming like, because we just spent like, what, 200,000 a couple years ago for some of our like wifi relays and stuff, that's, I'm pretty sure that's all in the same location, correct?
Uh, some of them are on the Community Bank, it's not a very big, it's an antenna you could hold in your hand.
Oh, okay.
But it also has a, like a refriger, size of a small refrigerator that has the connector, whatever the stuff in there. That has to be, it's, all the other connections were at in our outbuildings and everything, that was just up there, so.
Gotcha, oh, okay, gotcha.
So how tall, is it big enough? How high is it?
Not very great.
Okay. It's not like, I know it's maybe less than a concern, but it's not gonna like change the sightline of the property or anything down there.
Oh, you mean up there?
Yeah.
No, it shouldn't, shouldn't show up there.
Same way you can't see the, same way you can't really see the water reservoir, really, I mean, like the trees and stuff thrown out.
I know, it's.
Hollywood.
I don't know, we'd have to put a beacon on it or not, you would have to look into all of that, so.
Yeah, we should do that, incorporate that in, only in, across the mountains.
Can, now, Bill, can we go through the budget besides these three departments? If we have any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Because I don't know what else, if anybody has anything for these three jumps.
I've, I've got a quick question, as far as, and these are just some questions, I mean, I'm sure there's quick explanations. Under engineer, there's a large jump there for personnel service, page 25. So I'm, just, is there a third of a physician in, or is that the change with?
I think though, to correct me, you know, some of that money was just transferred from another one of the, because one of our areas is based there, 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 the other one is basically out of town for a reason, maybe trying to handle that.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering if, how long has Allison been here? Last year, we might not have had a full year of Allison in there, and this year, we have 100% or 52 weeks of her paying. That's, I think that could be the jump.
So we're not adding under physician?
No.
Okay. Under special items on page 28, the additional costs for taxes and assessments from 40,000 budgeted to 52,000, is, what is that?
That is.
Is that part of the reassessment? What is that?
That is the impact of those properties that we acquired from the town, I believe. I'd like to check that out, but I believe that's what it is. We took, I don't know how many houses, I believe that is the impact of that.
We don't own any of them anymore.
Really?
Well, we own some, we own some land.
Yeah. I'll, I'll have to check that.
You know what, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I wish, I wish Nick was here, because that could maybe shut some light in there.
And what about employee relations services from 20 to 35?
We have, we're starting negotiations.
And we?
With the, the both police unions.
And we use the outside, yeah, source for that?
Job.
Yeah.
The arbiter.
Um, one, I mean, just, I guess to point out, as much as I guess what needs to be done, needs to be done, but just, you know, as everyone's aware, the contingency account has been decreased.
I left 200.
200.
Just a, just a figure that I.
We started this year with 220.
250.
233 last year.
I started, we have five?
Yeah.
500?
We've had 200.
Page 38.
200 the last few budgets and the current budget, we upped it to 233, and that was to bring the, we wanted to, let's see, that was to bring the budget down to 1% last year. We took that, add 33,000, moved it in the contingency.
Okay. All right.
500,000, wow, you guys are buying a lot of police cars at the end of each year.
Quick correction on parks. So there's a personnel jump there for the park, department, page 35, the personnel service, is there?
I think it's streets, should be a decrease of the same, we lost a position in the streets and paid for that person out of the streets account themselves, we just got things situated this year.
Okay.
And by, in the current budget, we added a position at the parks maintenance.
Oh, could we talk about that?
Add a position?
In this cur, in this?
Not an antenna.
Oh, the la, okay.
In the current, okay. Okay, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, you're right, the current, yeah, okay. All right, but that's just a shuffle from one to the other, all right.
Yeah, if you go over to page 33, you can see where the personal, so personal service and maintenance of streets went from 468 to 445.
That's what, yeah.
So other things that have not changed, so we still have funding in there, 45,000 for treat, graves, maintenance, animal services.
About that alone.
There's still some funding in there for the trap needed release program?
Yes.
5,000.
Yeah, there's 30, 35 in there, 30 for SBC and 5 for trap needed state.
Have those been, has that been pretty fair as far as what we're actually spending or incurring?
We haven't gone over 30,000, not to my knowledge.
No, we're well under.
I take care of billing, I don't keep a whole tally, I think we're making a pretty good out.
So in, in all, the city's doing better than the previous arrangement that we have?
Oh, yes, we're remaining 60,000 a year, and have no idea how many dogs they're picking up and how many, less than 30.
Yeah.
And we have an idealized list basically of every single transaction.
And, and your guys are okay being involved in, I know, I know sometimes I mean?
Oh, no, it's minimal, I mean, they're, they're, all, all. Oh, no, it's minimal, I mean, they're, they're, all, all they're doing is they, they now have to submit a report to me and I just match the reports that they generate, help with the bill and I get to make sure of the jobs before we pay it. So it's a very minimal impact on that.
Thank you. Um, and then just a last quick question on the, um, you know, the expansion on the marketing director position at the Bartlett House. Um, what, what does that entail?
Okay, Jay.
Uh, I'm sorry, three, seven.
That's Gail Fuster and Jane Torre services, I believe.
Yeah. What we did last year, the, uh, the person who made the donation, there was money left over in that account and they wanted it to go, they're, they're still in the effort, you know, the operation of the Bartlett House, so we were able to fund the marketing director. That's been proven out very well, so we'd like to keep that going and it's a minimal expense. A little minimal, it's, 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 uh, it's the, it's the addition of.
One thousand.
About seven, eight thousand dollars. That's also the cleaner and the marketing director there. And that's the, uh, cleaners, the cleaners and the marketing director there, so.
So, so in, so in effect, in effect, that is a new part-time position?
Yes, part-time position, yeah.
So going forward, if we get into this new budget year and things don't go well and crisis continues, would that be one of the first things, you know, things like that would be the first things to go? Not necessarily?
She's not, right now, that person's not on payroll.
Okay.
All our part-time.
So the eleven thousand is?
What's that?
So the eleven thousand is the donation or isn't that our money?
That was funded by the donation.
That was funded by the, by, that was funded.
So it's coming here, is it still funded by the donation?
No.
So that's our, yeah, no, I'm just saying if things don't go well, that's something that I don't think is a necessity as much as fire and lose and D P W.
And right now, right now, all of our part-timers are not on payroll.
I mean, I'm, personally, I, I would, I would, I understand Chris Turey does a lot of, that position does a lot of kind of jack-of-all-trades between coordination as well as marketing. But I mean, if it were up, you know, in my opinion, rather than spending, you know, ten thousand dollars on a marketing position that people should be volunteering for with the historical society, I'd rather have ten thousand dollars in street repairs, um, you know, rather than having that cut out of the budget. Maybe that's nitpicking, but I guess that's, that would be my, my real recommendation on that.
I agree, I, I think we have the priorities and I think our taxpayers, you know, they want services and I think those are the most important things. Um, and I, I've been going to the historic meetings and there's a lot of people that are about and doing a great job, and I think, you know, it comes down to the priorities. I think services that people are paying for, they want, and that should be the priority.
I mean, I, I guess, you know, I, I think, first of all, awesome job I, you know, bought the department on, on all the cost reductions. I mean, I think it's really great and it, and it shows that, you know, we're obviously faced with a really tough year ahead. Um, I think there's a, there's a lot of uncertainties. Uh, Fred, you're saying you're forecasting now a reduction of two hundred and fifty thousand?
In, well, I'm just saying.
In, in sales tax revenue?
This two sixteen would help cover, uh, what I predicted we're, we're going to be short in May. So if we're short a hundred twenty-five in May, we have a cushion of two hundred and sixteen we're in a shortfall in June or July.
Okay.
And that.
So, so then you're not, you guys are working, the, the, this budget is staying firm with what is projected for sales tax revenue? You haven't adjusted that?
I'm proposing if we lower it by two sixteen.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I think Bill and I have had twenty conversations and the reality is, this is, this budget is going to be a moving target depending on what happens and we're, we're, we're going to have budget transfers, good things are going to happen, bad things, uh, it's a big trial ball and we, we don't know what's going to happen, but we're trying to keep a hundred and fifty people working here and provide services.
Right, which is why I guess I would be more apt to say it's time to tighten the, the belt straps where we can. You know, I'm not necessarily looking to cut services, but I sure as hell don't know. We want to jump into expanding services that was maybe previously covered by a grant. Um, but, but now we've got all flipped the bill. That's not, that's my point.
So where should that eleven thousand dollars go then?
I just said, I'd rather have, rather than ten thousand dollars, I'd rather have a phone in our streets.
So five, uh, one-one-zero-point-four-twelve?
I mean, I'm, when you're talking about critical services that our municipality should provide, sure, street repairs.
Just so, like, for example, streets repairs, that one, that wasn't there?
Parks, building repairs, I mean, right, ten thousand bucks.
Do you have a specific thought on that ten thousand you cut out, Bob?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just, I'm making a general statement. I don't know what are the ideal spot for that to go. It's just, I, um, I'm offering my two cents.
I wish, I wish Chris Turey was here so he could maybe embellish on what's going on at Bartlett House. That's, it's too bad that he's not here to, to tell you what Gail's doing and, and the impact of her services are. I'm told that she's doing a terrific job and there's a lot of stuff going on there that hasn't been going.
Do we have any revenue coming?
They, they have fundraisers, yeah.
Okay, could you show us?
What's the revenue?
Kind of the revenue that's coming?
It's money that she's taking in for the events they're holding, from what I'm getting.
Where is that in the budget?
There's no revenue from the Bartlett House.
Okay.
She's, she's doing.
She's using it.
Pardon me? Goes into a, goes in a trusted agency account.
For who?
Could be used at the.
Could be used for stuff at the Bartlett House.
So if she gets really good at this, couldn't you use that trusted agency that she's taking in to pay her instead of taking it from the taxpayers?
Yeah.
That would, that would be a.
That's a possibility.
A possibility. It would just be nice to see what was, she's taking in that could be used to supplement your pay.
There, is, is a page, is there a page in the trust and agency? No, that's in the, that's in the, there's a page in the B W B report, I'm guessing.
Kind of a standalone entity.
Oh, I have another question, um, and maybe this is Bob. I don't see anything for the sidewalk program. Are we not doing that this year?
Uh, no, I don't know.
Because that is very successful. Like, I was one of the skeptical ones, I didn't think people would want to, you know, come up with the money, but they did. And we put fifty thousand aside, I think it was all spent, so ultimately the city saw a hundred thousand dollars worth of sidewalk repairs. And people really liked that program, so that's one thing that, you know, I would like to see continue. It's been good.
Where, where is that in the budget?
It's not in there.
So.
That was a one time, that was a capital transfer, that was a, we transferred it out of, out of FOMA and created a capital fund.
Which, depending on how the summer pans out, depending on this whole ordeal, I think we could, if, if the sky isn't falling, right, like, we could do it later, like, oh, hey, you know, things are returning to normal, people are actually outputting in sidewalks and not like locked in their home with troops running the streets. Like, I think that might be something we look at. Right, sure, but if we're all locked in our homes and not doing anything, I don't think anybody's going to have the income stream to come in to want to do that. And I think the city would be on, you know, kind of a skeleton crew trying to maintain order and basic services, so.
I didn't realize that was the thing I spent, I thought, I thought it was quite counts.
Yeah.
There's ten thousand, ten thousand on the fifty?
Yeah. And some of that is committed towards, um, so I have some residents who couldn't get around to it because it was work being done on Washington Street last year. Um, and so they've got it furloughed, if you will, they've, they've got it, some of that funding reserved that they applied for last year, but they're going to be able to use for this, this summer.
There's a sidewalk in Ward Two that she put in for that is coming back, but she's come through. So the people are really lined up to do it.
Mm-hmm, is that that tree issue that Kelly brought to our attention?
Yeah.
Dave Rodden, you go? I'm assuming that the coronavirus situation went on, I'm just thinking of Como today, these protective things aren't going to get from Boston to Los Angeles. So I'm assuming like concerts and parks are going to be canceled or closed hall and, and assuming that will not, they'll branch out, so swimming pools out there. So with the money that we're saving from not using those two services, maybe we would, I think streets are important too, they give them a lot of confidence about models. It was the money that we're saving for not having concerts and, and the swimming pool and park function to, in St. John's, we, we're not doing anything over there, so maybe we could use that money and transfer it back to D P W, the savings, since it'll, it'll get hold for a couple months. Because I, I do think streets should be part of what you did here because there's so many doors that are still open.
I, I, along those lines, and I think I mentioned it to Bill a couple of weeks ago about our summer, you know, the people we hired this summer, and if we don't get back to normal till after, as you say, August, we won't be hiring a lot of those.
We may not have any marketing to do at all.
If I remember correctly, when we met last, we, we all kind of agreed that we're going to put a stake in the ground and say, we think it's going to, business is going to be as usual on June first, so we could go through the whole budget and say, well, what if it lasts three months? And I thought we tried to avoid that and say.
Do we transfer later as necessary?
Saying, we could go through.
So I walk out too.
We could take five hundred dollars out because this might not happen in July, but I thought we were working on the premise that we're going to hope that on June first, we're back to normal. That's why, you know, we didn't take anything out as you're suggesting, so we could.
And I think we could do that, I think on June first, we can assess and we have the ability to put in transfers, right, and change the budget or not.
Yeah, and say, hey, we're going to wipe out the pool, the pool money to.
I agree, right. We wanted to get the budget fast and then, as we said, it's a moving target.
If on, if on June first, Como says no one's going to be playing at the parks for the next two months, we can make a transfer at that time.
Yeah, saying, all right, street crew, you guys are.
I mean, I, I. Hot patch of more stuff. Complain of spending too much on streets, so.
I also, I, I respectfully disagree with Dave, what you did as well. I, I know we always have work on our streets, but I don't think we have to pour on the streets. I think, I think there's, our streets are better today than they have, than they were five years ago or ten years ago, so I might add that, I think we did a pretty good job for that.
Well.
I just never heard of it. And mine were drainage, you know, that I'm.
Right.
I have to differ with you.
Come to Salamanca.
Every, every guy, I mean, we call it in, they, parks is over, our street is over there fixing the right of the.
Oh, yeah, they fix them, but they need a lot of work, earth structure, it's going to be a lot of work in there.
Well, and then some of the bigger ones, like Washington Street, every year they patch it and it comes back up, but we have a big capital project kind of set aside to overhaul that one because a lot of it is under the substrate of the street, so.
Well, the other thing from that time was that the, uh, CHIPS funds was left current and the extreme winter recovery fund was left at sixty-five million. So we shouldn't get reductions in the CHIPS funds. And the AMES funding is, uh, is, uh, no change in the AMES funding, so, that was huge.
Yeah, those were the two big.
What was in, was there something in that email, Bill, that said the, the governor might have to make a mid-year change?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, what, can you speak a, a little bit to that?
Yeah.
I tried to underst, does that mean they go through a mini-budget process mid-year to make adjustments?
Kind of like we're talking.
Here's what it says, the mid, mid-year budget reduction, the budget includes language that would permit the state budget director to make uniform reductions to appropriations if the state budget becomes unbalanced because revenues fall below projections or expenditures raise above projections during the given period. The, uh, proposed reductions would be shared with the legislature and they would have ten days to prepare and adopt their own planning. If the legislature does not do so, the budget director proposed reductions would go into effect automatically.
So it sounds like he's going to do what we're going to do and they're just going to be like, hey, we can't afford all the CHIPS funds or the AMES funds and they're just going to start depleting stuff and everyone's got, I.
I just had a bigger budget to do.
I mean, I.
Yeah, well, that's going to drastically affect us municipalities that are putting the same.
Funds is a working tool. That's all.
Yeah, it's very.
Mm-hmm. This is, this is our plan.
It's a plan.
Mm-hmm.
It almost has to stick with.
That's why we're on the bridge.
I just wanted to address something you mentioned about that historical thing and marketing, you know? It would be interesting to see what her marketing, her job is, is, um, maybe she could market marketing a little bit more, but that's part of her job, it would be important. If that's what her job, or is the job just to market the Bartlett House?
Yeah, that's what I understand.
You know what I mean? If it's just a Bartlett House, then, I don't even know what the hell a marketing house is. I know it's a historical, but one of the events there, you know, I.
I guess to, to Ron's point, and that's something that I, I know we're not going to fund a full-time position anytime soon, but, I mean, I would love to see all of the rec programs marketed, right, with someone like that. Um, rather than just marketing the historical building associated with the Bartlett House that generates maybe two thousand dollars a year in revenue, I mean, you know, when we took it upon ourselves to, and we were faced with a tough budget a couple of years ago, you know, we, we cut some of those, those costs down and, and now they're starting to creep back up, and I guess I would rather, I would prefer to see a bigger bang for your buck and have a marketing position for all of rec programs. You know, we have the historical society, they showed up here and said, you know, what active group they have, okay, well then, market, the historical society, which is the Bartlett House, like, that's what you guys should be doing. Um, you shouldn't expect any taxpayers to flip the bill for a marketing position to pay for just the marketing of the Bartlett House. So I guess that's, I guess that would be my, I, you know.
I'm sorry, from a marketing perspective for, for the recreation department, Chris is doing one heck of a job of marketing, uh, marketing our, our activities, all the things, uh, he's out there, he's, uh, he's going to Pennsylvania, he's marketing the rain, he's marketing the pool, he's marketing all of our stuff, ice skating, all that, he's out there, he's doing one heck of a job marketing. Uh, the Bartlett House, you know, it's a very, it's a, it's an asset to the city, uh, Point Museum, yeah, now we're getting, the historic society is, is, they're getting a scheme teachman, I guess, is running that now, there's a lot of, a lot of good things that are going to happen here. It's our, it's, you know, it's the, it's the history of Oleham, just being marketed there. And they've, they've done a lot of wonderful things and, uh, you know, we can get you all those things that they've been doing, uh, but I think it's a valuable asset to the city. I think for a seventy-six-hundred-dollar savings here, uh, you know, we're making a big mistake.
But, but the historic society is doing the historic stuff, what this Gail, of course, and I'm not sure what she does, because I've, I've sat in on some of the meetings and they have a lot of very interesting ideas coming forward and they've been looking at different avenues to secure funding. And most, I mean, everybody on that historic society that volunteers, none of them get paid. So I think they're doing a great job. Um, I just think that, I think if I go back to what Fred, um, with the revenue, if she's bringing in revenue, then maybe down the road, not too long, she could be self-sustaining. So some of that revenue could pay for her to do the, that, that was my point.
I was going to suggest, why don't we leave it alone and next year we'll have a real good idea of what their efforts are over there and maybe we can.
And it could be one of those line items we cut because currently it's closed, right? The Bartlett House is closed to the public because of the whole COVID-nineteen?
Yeah.
So, I mean, essentially this is going on, it's, you know, and there's no events during that time period, you're going to be saving on that line item anyways, so.
And Bill, I, I wasn't, I wasn't getting Dave saying that. And Bill, I wasn't, I wasn't getting Dick saying that I don't think Chris is doing anything. I'm, I'm in fact saying, maybe he could use some help, okay? I'm not saying that I don't think he's doing a good job, I think he's doing a great job and I think he's done great with what he has to work with. Maybe he could use some assistance.
Kind of spreading that out over two different...
That's all, I was, I was indicating.
And maybe she's helping. Well, she is.
Yeah, she's doing it.
She is with the Bartlett House and, and the Point, Point Museum, as is, as is Terry Shaw with the Senior Center.
And then Dave Dekman is still...
Dave Dekman is just a historian. Yeah, and that, that is, that is cut down to twenty-five hundred stipend.
Right. So he hosts the functions?
Does he?
He, he, he hosts the functions or, what is the, what is that position?
Dave, you know, Dave is a wealth of information about the history of OAM. He gets requests from genealogy or, you know, from...
He does the research.
He does the research, yeah. And Gail does all the other stuff.
So, yeah, no, if, if you have, like, if you think your house is in a historic district or you have questions, a lot of times he can, he can answer them as, as...
Dave has helped carry out when we get the, the secret request, you know, for the different parts and all that. You know, Dave is, you know, he's getting up there in years, apparently he does a good job, but...
Time to find a hundred...
He was back from, I believe, I think that position was fifteen thousand and that got cut down to twenty-five hundred, so.
So the plan would be, we're going to keep it for now and see how it goes and evaluate it next year.
And according to these cuts, we're coming in at a zero percent? Is that, okay?
With a cushion for sales tax roughly eighteen thousand dollars.
And then, cool.
So I have your permission with the FICA tax to defer it and set up a reserve.
Did we figure out if there, is there, are they talking about making that interest-based? Did you find any information on that? Like, if, if we defer our FICA, do we have to pay it back with interest?
I've never heard of that.
Okay, we asked if there was any...
Maybe forgiven in fact.
Right.
No talk of paying it back for interest.
Okay, just checking.
So it'll be paid back over a two-year, two-year period.
Okay.
Now, the way that this is written up here, Bill, that is just, would go into a reserve account, that's not being spent on anything.
The, the, under the, the third FICA?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I'll send a loan to the reserve account.
Hundred forty would, would, is in the budget as, as a reduction and a hundred forty would go into a, a account. So Fred will set up a separate account that I'll go into and that's where it'll stay.
See what happens, six funds tomorrow, maybe more forgiven.
Yeah.
By doing that, then the council will have to make a decision if we have, if we use it for something other than paying back the FICA.
Everybody agree, permission, permission to do the FICA?
Yeah.
Permission granted.
Any other budget-related questions at all? Anything else we, we didn't talk about? Uh, what about...
Trey, Trey Gregg in here?
I've got an update on something, do you mind?
Yeah, we could talk about water service.
Oh, no, go ahead, Paul.
Okay, I was just going to say, so kind of, correct by memory, but the projected revenues for independent budgets do not reflect the proposed increases in order to...
Half a percent.
I put a half and one and a half.
So we were going to go to zero and zero?
I'll, I'll have to adjust.
Okay. Does that really allow me to do that, correct?
No, I might get with, I might get with Bob and say if there's, you know, one or two line items where we could reduce expenditures, kind of like we did the general fund, I'll, I'll try to work with him.
You, you get what I'm asking for, right?
Yeah. Do we, what is that, what is that unequal? What is the impact to sewer?
It would be twenty thousand dollars in revenue.
I almost, I almost feel like those lines coming into zero, like, every year we raise, like, when we raise it five percent, our water bill goes from twenty-nine forty-six to thirty, you know, thirty and a quarter. Like, every, you know what I mean? Everyone's like, oh my God, everyone raises their pitchforks and torches and, and then their minimum water bill goes up by seventy-five cents.
Yeah, it's...
I just, it...
It's amazing that you're paying maybe ten dollars a year more than...
Just, well, to me, like, if we, you know, those, those accounts were, you know what I mean, we're paying service debt payments, we've got the Washington Street project to cover. You know, there's a lot of different things, so a half a percent in one and one and a half in the other, we're, you know, just slightly over one percent across the board. I don't, I don't see that as being a big deal, it's not five percent. It, I think if you left them alone for the twenty grand, it...
Well, am I wrong in also suggesting that, I, I think the water fund and the sewer fund are, I mean, we're always putting money into that every, at the end of the year, right? They're always...
And we're always losing customers.
Can I ask you a question? This is for Bob. This past winter, if we've had a lot of, lot of main breaks, I've been, I remember years, every, every week we had a break, was it lower this year because the winter was so mild?
Yeah, I mean, usually after it gets really cold and warms up.
Right.
So, yeah, there were, there's a few, we had plenty. There were a few losses, but we found one.
Because I know there for a few years, we're having a lot of them. But with the winter being so mild this year, I just figured they were down.
Sorry, I just, I think it's suggested that we have zero percent, because it's a water source.
Any, any comment or thoughts on that?
I have type person, like, this is a gentleman, he's helping figure out what's going on. My interns are about on a budget with, are taking the water replacement, the sewer replacement. There's supposed to be a large amount of funding through the state, the insurance department, maybe you should apply for grants, I thought he could do, you know, we're working on a water master plan, a sewer master plan in place, or some new business.
We have, we have next Tuesday night is a work session and we can talk about, if I'm prepared to talk about that.
And that's fine, but I could just say from, from my point of view though, I certainly wouldn't want to get in the habit of even doing that again next year, but given all the circumstances going on in the world, I take this in full respect too. I don't want that, but it's just one second.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm fine walking out of here with zero percent on the general fund budget and leaving the flooded sewer at half and a one and a half. I'm, that's very comfortable for the twenty grand difference, that those two funds would add up to.
Dave, my two cents, like, I have to agree with Paul, it's like, there's so much drama going on with this world right now, with everybody getting laid off, losing their jobs, there's, climate rates going up and down, so, but we could have some money for one year, let's do it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with Paul. I think it, the three zeros makes it look like we really try to help people out, you know? Whereas, you know, you do one or that, probably nobody sees it, but if you do all three and you come in, then it, it probably gets talked about that, you know, your representatives actually try to bring it in for you.
And we have an aging community and it's the seniors that, you know, they're the ones pinching pennies if they're on social security. They, there are a lot of them old enough, you know, they're the first ones to complain and, and I totally understand because I see a lot of them at food pantry every Friday. So I think if I can cause right, I think we have to do what we can to help our citizens.
Well, and, and, you know, we, obviously we don't want to go back to the states of nineteen ninety, then that to two thousand two, right, where it was literally zero for twelve years and then got managed.
Well, it's, it's going to have to be double that then, whatever the increase is going to be, two years down the road, it's going to have to be, right, double that. So instead of a one percent, it'll have to be a two or three percent. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with a, a zero percent, but just keep in mind that it's, it's going to have to be greater following year.
Also, keep in mind that under, under this advocacy update, water and sewer infrastructure funding budget will include a threshold five hundred million for drinking water, wastewater infrastructure funding, similar to what was proposed in the executive budget, so, there may be a possibility to get some funding here too, you know? And, and I, I, I'll ask a question tomorrow on the governor's call, if there's, you know, mandates that have been issued to municipalities by D E C, is there going to be some deferment of that, those mandates? If that's the case, there's two hundred and fifty thousand in the sewer that we may not have to do next year. So, if we're in consent order, I'll post a question and, you know, maybe get some thought going there. I'm sure there's a lot of municipalities that have mandates from D E C, consent orders, and maybe that'll, maybe that'll, maybe that's two hundred and fifty we won't have to pay next year, but just, you know, that could help also.
So any other budget-related questions? The reason I'm asking this is because I, I want to leave this meeting tonight to the general consensus that on Tuesday we're going to pass the budget with these changes.
I don't know if we can pass it Tuesday, that's a work session?
Do we need a work session then? I mean...
So when was the day we were talking about that? Wasn't Tuesday the day it passed?
Following Tuesday, we can ask.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah, so...
We have the fourteen.
Right.
That's cutting it close, but we have the fourteen, we are, our next meeting, our actually council meeting, you know?
So what would be the procedure then, if we're not, if we don't want to cut it close, like, or...
I, I think a special meeting, the Tuesday before the work session to adopt the budget.
Or after the work session.
Or after the work session. We could ask NITECon to do that, so.
So...
Yeah, I mean, after you guys all discussed, I mean, for the twenty grand, I mean, I guess I'm on board with everybody else, so if everybody's in coherence on this entire thing, I mean, do we need another work session?
I just, I want, like, if there's anything else that's pulling anybody back, I want to get it out on the table, now if we can talk about it.
I just have a comment on the, on the water lines, breaks and stuff. Over the past several years, we've been doing a lot of changing of the different valves and that stuff because of breaks, so we're, you know, I guess you could say we're getting a little bit, not really ahead, but we, you know, yes, we had a mild winter, we did have a few breaks this year, but sometimes if we get another year like we had, we had over thirty days of, of below zero, you know, we're probably going to get more breaks, but, but, you know, we're doing a good job, basically, of all our employees, I might have to take that back, probably ninety-five percent of our employees do a great job. No matter where you work, there's always going to be a few that don't. And, but I got to tell you, I'm very proud of the department heads, looking forward to this effort, realizing the position we're in and, you know, basically coming up to the plate and, you know, putting together a, a good budget. I feel this is a very good budget and it may not have everything, may not have all the cuts that you may be interested in, but it's, it's doable and we can move forward.
You don't want to drag Gregg in here to ask him what mild changes he has in his lines?
Really need all that to be...
Knock that twelve bucks off of that line.
You talking about Greg?
Yeah.
He gave up a couple of paper clips and stuff.
Anyone have anything else?
Paul, I think now that we're all together tonight, maybe we should look at only meet twice in April, you know, because once we get the budget done, that's the most important thing and I don't see any emergencies coming up. And we could always call for a special meeting, but with the situation as it is, maybe just have the two meetings in April and then, because luckily we can do that. I don't know how we'd have to post that or if that's something to do that.
So another thing we could, I think that's fine, I think the, the other thing I was thinking is that we should investigate the, the possibility of doing this, or doing some kind of online thing, even just a tribe, I mean, county's doing it, right, I mean, kids are doing it, yeah.
They're having a meeting right now.
We have, yeah, we've got GoToMeeting set up.
Yeah.
We're going to look at now, how, I got tomorrow morning, Jason's coming in early, we're going to look at how we can put everybody up on the screen. Right now I'm doing it with the department heads in the morning and, but it's like, I got to turn the laptop around so they can see everybody and we're going to try to put it up on the screen so we can see everybody. If that works out, then, no, excuse me, I don't have a computer, we could, we could do it with everybody who has the capability.
So is that like an app you could get on your iPad?
Yeah. Are you comfortable, Ron? Huh? Are you comfortable next door?
I was, I was talking with John about this too, because I've been, I, they used to have Google Hangouts, you could just go and, and it's an app on your phone and, like, if somebody's on a, on a computer, you can actually have it go right to, like, YouTube Live. They've since gotten rid of that and I've been using some software and I've been testing, I got to test out Skype, things like that. I don't know how GoToMeetings would actually transition into like a broadcasting service so that, because you'd have to, our meetings would have to be recorded, so it's...
And the kids are having a lot of success with Zoom.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't messed around.
I heard something about Zoom, they're hacking it all.
Yeah, I'm going to figure that out.
Before we get some photography on that, so...
They have to have an i, i, i...
At, at NITECon Bradford, we use Microsoft Teams, which is part of Office 365, and it's really good.
What is it called, Microsoft Teams?
Teams.
I'll have Jason look into that.
But it's part of that 365 suite, which I don't think we got, right? We were talking about that the other day, we decided to go with the one-time purchase instead of the subscription, but it worked really surprisingly well. I think the school district uses that as well, but...
Yeah, my, my, I just had to help my daughter log into the, the 365 today.
So just a, what's been happening with the Zoom, Zoom is very effective, people, the students that have been using this for classes, they will put out the secret password out into the worldwide web and, and then inappropriate people log into the meeting and do inappropriate things, so...
That gives me something to do.
As long as all of us were to, were to keep the password confidential.
You don't want Kevin coming in? The other Kevin?
From Kevin Dory.
Yeah, that, that poses, that poses an intricate question and it's probably a nit question, if we do that, are we going to have to let the public, you know, in...
Because some of the software offers you...
Is that covered on the open, open meetings law, part of the verve...
It may be, I, I can...
So some of the, yeah, some of the software used to do that stuff, where you could have, like, the, you know, three professors are actually at different locations and then other people can log into the meeting, ask questions on a sidebar that is, that, you know, maybe we're not seeing or interacting with until the end or anything like that. You know, we don't have to use those features while it's still also being broadcast for students to download later.
That would be a question for Jason, you know, using these programs, if the public were to tune in...
Right.
How do we ensure that something inappropriate doesn't happen?
Kevin chose a...
I got another, I got another request that we should be live streaming these meetings, not just...
Local recorder.
What is yours?
It's a local recorder.
Nineteen forty-two or what is your company?
Uh, 360 Rice.
Okay.
Oh, Life Twenty-Two is mine.
Whatever it is, so, but I did get another request, we should be live streaming these, so, I think...
It's like, what, ten, ten grand, right?
Yeah, I had that, you know, I don't, I guess I don't understand, yeah, but we could check that out again, so, we're more, yeah, future liberal law, law.
So, the only issue, excuse me, with having two meetings for April is that I thought we just decided to have a special meeting on the seventh, which would cut three meetings, so...
What do we have, let's say, so we do the seventh and then the fourteenth?
The seventh, the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
What should be across the...
The fourteenth and the twenty-eighth are the two regular meetings.
Yeah, second and fourth.
That would have been...
Do we have to do the twenty-eighth?
Do we have to do the seventh?
If we didn't do the twenty-eighth, we'd have to...
Do I, do I cut it that close, in case...
I mean, I, I don't have any objections, I mean, I think we're all on the same page.
I'm just thinking, what I'm thinking is if all of a sudden, a week from now, you know, ready to hit some, and, you know, we want to get the budget passed, and then worry about the other meetings?
So like, you're, you're saying martial law is going to be declared?
No, you don't know.
There were, we're zooming the budget.
Maybe we just do a special meeting on, on the, the seventh, which is next Tuesday, just to come in and pass the budget and then we...
Do you know something, Bill, that you're really worried? Do you know something that I don't know?
John, I just think ahead, you know what?
In concern.
I just think ahead, so, you know? He wants that budget, he wants that budget back.
I, I think a foot.
Well, I do.
Is the fourteen day time starting?
I do because I want to, I want the tax bills to go out, so we have some income coming in.
You want to get paid?
Yes. Remember, everybody, once we put the tax bill out there, everything that's in escrow is going to come through, so that's going to help with our...
It, it really is, the sooner the better.
Yeah, what do we estimate?[1796.12] Yeah, what do we estimate?
A million in escrow payments.
Yeah.
So why don't we try this then? Um, we'll do the seventh, pass the budget, do the fourteenth for a regular meeting. We'll skip committee night, twenty-first. And then the twenty-eighth will be the one we target to do.
Pay the mortgage during this first, click.
Or we'll do a teleconference.
Forgot about this.
You gotta do that.
Because by then Jason and everyone should be.
Exactly, it'll give us time to figure it out. Okay, any, uh, any other, John, update?
Yeah, just a quick update. I talked to Nick, uh, it was something that we bounced around, um, at last time, and it doesn't have to be decided, obviously, it's April, um, tax bills don't go out until June, right? Is that right?
May first.
May eighth or? May first?
No, they go out, yeah, yeah, they go out May first.
They go out.
Due June, May thirty-first.
Okay, so, um, uh, Nick and Greg did some research, uh, in regards to trying, uh, I brought up trying to help, uh, taxpayers, um, with their cash flows during this ongoing crisis, uh, what could we potentially do to give them a little additional leeway? And, uh, Nick said that under Karuji, um, they actually gave sixty days rather than the thirty day timeframe, uh, to allow payments with no penalty. So the, the tax bill is still effectively, um, you know, currently, you get that thirty day timeframe to, to pay it. This extends it out to sixty days with no penalty, uh, just to help people try to get their lives in order. But the, the catch there was if it's not paid in the, in that sixty day timeframe, it incurs a two percent penalty, um, immediately after that, right? So typically we have a one percent penalty, um, if it's late after the, the first thirty days, there's no penalty in that first sixty days. And then after that, it gets hit immediately with a two percent penalty and then the normal penalty, uh, up to five percent until October, I think it is. So, you know, that would be something that I would be in favor of. Um, and in fact, uh, in my conversation with Nick, it actually most likely will prove to be, uh, revenue neutral. Meaning we do have a lot of people who pay on escrow, about sixty percent, uh, are paid in escrow, so they're gonna be paid right off the bat, you mean, you know? Uh, so there's not a real impact on our cash flows. And then those that maybe we do forego the, the cash flow, we actually, um, ma- potentially make a benefit from the two percent, um, that's not paid in the, in the first sixty days. So, um, he might be able to explain it better, but it's something, again, I don't think we need to worry about it today, but it's something that we might be able to consider.
How does the, how does the escrow work if people aren't paying their mortgages because they've stayed for two or three months?
I, I don't know.
That's, that's, so like, we get them and then they, you know what I mean, it works this year?
We're not gonna get paid.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I would assume, I would assume, I would assume the bank has to pay them.
I'm, I'm assuming the bank would pay it and draw down an escrow fund and then you would, your payments would slowly catch it up for the next tax bill, but I.
You know, we could, uh, we, we could do this, I, as long as we advertise what the special meeting is about, we can put the budget and then, uh, to, uh, extend the, uh, extend the, uh, you know, the, you know, that no fee until, we can put that out on the agenda too. And you can, we can just give you a week to think about it.
Yeah.
I'm gonna talk to Nick, we'll have Nick here at that meeting on Tuesday night, uh, and we can put that out, so we can do those two that way. We can also, we, uh, the other thing we have to do is, uh, I think, do we need a resolution even if we're not increasing the water sewer fund? No? Okay. If we're going zero, zero, we don't need a resolution.
Because he did say that that would take a council resolution to, um, forego.
Yeah.
Or extend the, extend the.
What does that say? It was advertising.
Payment period.
You know, we may wanna, for what it's worth, we may want to, uh, we may want to include, uh, the water bills in that too. Uh, people can't pay their wire bills, and the interest will be, you know, uh, I guess you'd say for a month, we could, uh, the first month would be no interest and after that we start to.
What is our situation if you don't pay your water bill within, uh, one month? Do you, is it a flat penalty or is it interest?
Interest, ten percent, uh, ten percent. It's a ten, I think it's ten percent, isn't it?
Ten percent, not recurring, so it's only paid a month if you're late.
Oh, so it's not compounded?
You don't charge it only one time.
Okay.
We can make that compounded if people would pay their water bills quicker.
We get redem, we get indemnified at the end of each year at least.
I, 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 I wasn't thinking, maybe we just leave that alone, you know, if it's not compounded.
I think the water and sewer, because it's connected so much to D P W, we just, because we, we, are we down our part, I think, with what we want to do to another link, and then that one's just gonna complicate.
I guess with no, I guess with not increasing, I think, maybe we just, I guess, take it on a case by case basis.
So when you've got the projects, we, we've got three of them, but two that we were like twenty-eight thousand dollars short. Did you find that, that was the money found for that?
Oh, let's talk about, we didn't talk, can we talk about those? Uh, the boiler, Tim, you wanna talk about your boiler?
Yeah, so the boiler essential part that we'll have to replace is the actual original boiler in the building in San Diego. Uh, you know, anybody who ever wants a tour in the winter, it would definitely be a selling point. Uh, we have to keep the captain's window open in the wintertime on the second floor because the heat runs. And then the front office gets cold, has jackets on, it's, it's seen as, she's seen her life. So it's, it's definitely something that's been on our radar for a few years and, you know, we're, it's just not energy efficient, it's, it's just a, not a heat back great condition. Uh, what we did get holds on was about four or five years ago from Hazza, then it come in around forty thousand, get in five thousand for work, just, you know, cost over the run or could just make recent costs on supplies.
And then on the, uh, uh, the cement work for, uh, central fire station was the aprons in front and back. Uh, Bob has, uh, reviewed that. And, uh, he feels we can buy, uh, another year of repairs. But the, where we have to make some repairs is on station one, one, I, I, I believe that was, I think that's around sixteen thousand to make, might have been taken.
Yeah, the parapet, we talked about this, um, facility needs report, uh, we met with Dave Mason, you know, very experienced Mason, has worked on many, many buildings, worked on, uh, the wastewater treatment plant in Murray Kelly, and we talked about like just getting it safe, I mean, like stabilization project. And that would cost sixteen thousand, so they take away like all the brick potential fall and, you know, Chief Richardson made a good point. It's likely that any of that brick or stone or ball on the garage door was opening and during that time they could have people standing there, quiet, they had to decide, um, or, or ambulance comes out. This would take away that like safety issue, but actually, uh, there may be an additional cost of, you know, figuring out, et cetera, they can decide and we can cover it. And we would have some time to decide what to do next.
Well, because, um, he the guy that did, uh, manhandling, he didn't put that netting up.
Yeah.
Probably because the chips were falling down.
Yeah, same, same, I'll be saying, manager.
So just figuring quickly, uh, with the, uh, stabilizing the parapet on station one, the boiler at station, or at central fire, uh, a hundred and twenty-five to fix this building, that's about a hundred and eighty-six thousand. We have a hundred and ninety-six left in the current, in the current budget contingency, so that could be used to cover that, right?
One car.
And a police car and a pear tree.
Probably not.
So, uh, and then we'll have to, that leaves us with ten thousand. I don't know if we can find the money for one police car or as we get into this, we can probably talk about that. Or, uh, uh, we'll just see. Uh, we also, uh, for everybody to know is we are keeping track of all of our, uh, lost revenues, uh, expenses. To, uh, we'll be submitting them to the county for a possibility of reimbursement by penal money too. I say, I say a possibility.
Would we, is something that we, would it be something that we would be interested in if we have a work session sometime in May? Or we can go through this again and have it in, and we can kind of come away with some direction? We don't really have to do this.
No, I'm just, just letting you know.
We do it, we're doing first, really.
Yeah, as long as we, yeah.
So maybe we, uh, chew on this a bit and then like first committee night in May, we'll have a work session. Kind of go through it all the way. You guys pulled that, everybody?
Okay. Anything else?
Eric, you want to discuss the, well, I'm sure the great city, right?
Oh, yes, uh, if, uh, if we could bring up, uh, I don't know if we can, it's just, uh, it wasn't really agenda, can we, go ahead, talk about it.
What we're looking at, obviously, we know what we're experiencing with the spiders, you just like the Buffalo, Houston City Buffalo Fire Department is sixteen positive, and they have sixteen under sixty under mandatory quarantine. Uh, they have, I mean, some aren't fifty, eight hundred guys on the line. What we're looking at long-term is if we lose half our ship, how can we go in and protect our residents or if it hits Bradford, protect theirs? We currently have a county mutual aid agreement that would, that allows shipping and those types of mutual aid to like Olan and Salamanca. Uh, however, we do not have one with the city of Bradford. And the only reason we're discussing this is just because if this does get dire, this would be something that would be in place that if, if we need full staff with each other or equipment with each other. We presently don't have that, basically cover both municipalities. We just want to be sure everybody was on the united front of city of Bradford. Fire chief and I have been discussing it with, with our mayor too and the city attorney, just to kind of get this going sooner than later, uh, just in case it does, you know, in case it does impact us.
Does it help having the Olan General and the Bradford Hospital being under the same umbrella? Will that help you in any way?
For that agreement, no, it'd be, it's, it's just between both, uh, fire, fire departments.
Because I know, um, Bradford brings a lot of their patients to Olan now.
Sure. Yes, they do. And, and it's just one of those things that, that would help us. It just gives us another tool and toolbox. If, and it's for, from an emergency services standpoint, all of that's on the table right now.
Uh, Chief, if we have this agreement, will we be able to build, uh, insurance companies?
Sure. If, yes, yeah, because once we have agreements, therefore, building insurance goes into this as well. Um, we, we have an agreement, for example, with Allee Rescue M S, that if they come in here, they, if they're all built, if we go out there, we're all built. So we're recouping costs if we go out and do these types of things.
Because I can see if, um, if say we did this near the hospital, you know, our guys being used to transfer a lot of central patients, you know, patients that were there, that worked back to Bradford and keep critical people here because it's a good service. So I can see you guys moving back there.
This would also.
So union issues with them doing that, or, what's that, are there union issues with that?
No, they're union as well. So there's, they're, yeah, they're, they're all whole, six seventy-six, seven or something like that, but yeah, there's no.
This, uh, this agreement would come to you as a form of a resolution, or you don't pass it, so. I, we're just, we're just letting you know what, what's going on.
Chief Rowley, you doing some other things?
Well, I wouldn't be going with that to any, I mean, it's a state police, we have, um.
Why don't you like that to me?
I don't, I don't need you to.
Nobody needs to, that's true.
They are all over there, it's called making terroristic threats, and that man, they, back in the day, he would, uh.
We should be able to.
Yeah. All you have to do is say one thing and then they charge you for making terroristic threats.
Bloodhound gang has warned me away from Pennsylvania.
Okay, I would like to wish you a good, second by all in good, in all favor?
Aye.
I oppose.